I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll open up this August 5th morning commissioners meeting. We have Casey from the Orators Office, all three commissioners from the county and county all present. First on our agenda, we've got the assessment and assumption agreement with Parkview Hospital. We had a couple typos that has been caught, so we're just changing that. You guys had a chance to look that over. Holly, you reviewed that?
Yes.
Okay. And entertain a motion to approve that assignment agreement with Parkview Hospital. They updated it.
So moved.
Second. All favor. Motion carries three out. Okay. If you do that, just when I'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay. We have Fulton County Council Agents Report. You guys reviewed that? Doug, do you have anything to add to that, or just a transcript report?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
Basically, this is for both first and second quarter. So, first quarter senior trips, we did thirty-three seventy-six, second quarter thirty-six seventy-seven. Public was thirty-two thirty-two and thirty-two ninety-eight. We had a total of sixty-eight oh eight on first quarter and sixty-nine seventy-five on the second quarter. County trips twenty-two thousand seventy in the first quarter, twenty-two seventy-one in the second. First quarter, we drove forty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-eight miles, fifty thousand eight hundred and ninety in the second quarter. Worked thirty-three hundred and five point five hours first quarter, thirty-five ninety-five point eight the second. We had, we used thirty-three hundred and thirty-five gallons of fuel the first quarter, four thousand nine the second quarter. Basically, we've got nine full-time drivers now and two part-time drivers. We did hire another part-time driver. And I sent you the quarterly claim, right?
I will get it.
There has been some minor changes, but the bottom line doesn't change. This shift in some money in different spots.
So you see yourself busier than you have been in the past then?
Yeah, I mean, we've never fully recovered from pre-COVID. We were averaging a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy rides a day. Now we're about a hundred and twenty-five. You know, like, good day, we do a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five. But it's slowly starting to pick up.
I know. We've had some talks with Pat Brown and the Health Department. I don't know if they've contacted you or not.
Yeah.
On some issues, and that's why I was wondering what...
Well, I know there was an instance with Pat that he had booked a ride, but something happened that we couldn't fulfill it. We couldn't meet that. And, I mean, we have some pretty tight pre-preparative schedules that are every day.
Okay.
And so it's hard. You know, if there's a driver available, we'll do it. And we have two guys that are basically dedicated out of town. That's Medicaid. And that's changing now, too, from Southeast Trans, and it's going to LCP. So we're trying to get set up with those guys.
I know. You know, Pat was looking at starting something himself. Yeah, I don't know if you was familiar with that.
I was in that meeting.
Was she in that meeting? Okay, okay. And, yeah. So I don't know, you know, I don't know. I'll let you guys talk and see what you come up with, but I mean...
Yeah, really, it depends on our schedule. If we have a driver available, we'll do it. You know, that's not, that's not an issue. It's just, a lot of the, most of the Medicaid runs are already on the schedule. Some are two months out.
Yeah. And I know some, even some talk was, you know, when somebody gets out of jail, it's Travis and them, what they are getting out of jail, having arrangements made where, you know, you're gonna pick them up and take them to X, Y, and Z, whether it's the, you know, treatment center or whether it's, you know...
And we do that. I don't know if Pat's familiar with that.
Oh, okay.
We utilize Trainspo. If we've got an inmate leaving that doesn't have transportation, we utilize Trainspo to take them wherever they need to go.
Okay, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't worry about that.
Well, I'm sure Pat's not either, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't send them out walking unless, unless they want to. But, I mean, typically, they've either got a ride or we give them a ride through Trainspo.
I was gonna say, we picked up quite a few.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's worked out great. We used to kick them out the door, even in the middle of the winter. And, and they came to jail with whatever clothing they had on. So, you know, a lot of times, they would come in with T-shirt and a pair of shorts or whatever. And, and at least before me, we would send them out in twenty-degree weather, T-shirt, shorts, and everything else.
So that's good enough. So do you make arrangements when they come out, if they got someplace?
If they need a ride, we'll give them a ride through Trainspo, yes. We've got vouchers through commissary, and Amber and the jail staff have those readily available if, if they need a ride, so.
It was a good thing, like, at after-hours, like, in the evening, daylight or something. So, if we can figure something out with that, I mean, I know there may be a few more funds available, whether we're looking, if you're looking to hire somebody for evening work or something.
That's possible.
A call-type thing, where they take the man home? I don't know. Just, we need to look at that stuff, too.
And we can, we're waiting. I was doing a traffic study for, a transportation study for all Fulton County.
Yeah.
So that's coming pretty, maybe this month yet. We gotta get some results back from them and see what they have to say, because they contacted all the other communities as well. I mean, we've talked about trying to, a fixed route to, like, Huana or Akron or something, you know, but if we just haven't been able to justify it, unless the only way to work is people that were coming into the grocery or doctor's appointments, they can kind of schedule one on the same day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get it?
I think they'll have it.
Okay, we have a... Okay, we have a couple laptop requests. We have one from the Treasurers Department looking for a laptop. You guys read that number? Entertain a motion on that.
I'll second it.
Okay. All fair. Motion carries three out. Oops. Just one signature. We have one from the Corors Office. Questions on that? Not entertain a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve it?
I'll second it.
Favor. Motion carries three out.
And by the way, I talked to Josh. He says he has laptops available. He will not have to go out and spend extra money, so they are available.
Good, I thought he did, yeah. Then we have a request for a cellphone for the Corors Office. So that way, they don't have to use their personal phones. entertain a motion to approve that?
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three out. Okay. Then we have the promiscuity note release for out of Bud Lake, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we wanted them, getting a release to approve the remit of that burden. So they've remade all the requirements set forth to them. Entertain a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three out.
Yeah, that's...
This one needs to be noted rise, Casey.
Uh, yeah.
Out of Bud Lake?
At the end, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so she's gotta watch her silence.
Yeah. Okay, we're doing department updates. Trent, Mayor brought you in. In case you need to get out of here, we'll get you in.
I was thinking about what I needed to say.
Oh.
Wait, what?
Patchy Drive's done. Open ends are Friday. We can go back and forth with the end dot Thursday and Friday, since we don't have signs that I requested almost a year ago to be looking at anyway. Looking at flashing crossing signs, push-button activated crossing signs on twelve and fifteenth, and I'm not sure what their plan is out of the patchy, but we're gonna have something soon. So, the other thing, we've, we're aggressively looking at options to, and we've got somebody working on a grant for a facility, a new facility, possibly for an emergency shelter. I know that's been something we've been dealing with every winter for who knows how long. Not only are we looking at that, which I hope to have up and running by winter of twenty-five, twenty-six, but we're gonna look at what our plan is for this coming winter. So, we've got a group of people working pretty hard on trying to put those two things together. So that is active. Probably the only other thing I need to talk about is the wooded property, east of the hotels. We did get all the MOUs from McDonald's, and I needed a couple from the property owner. And I wanted to correct the article on Sentinel a little bit. We are not spending, we are not spending taxpayer money to put a fence in. I had an agreement with this landowner that since our equipment was out there and we're gonna clear the wooded area for the easement for the road, we would go ahead, which is, we were, Dwayne and I walked it last week, and it's pretty thin inside the perimeter of that. So we're gonna clear the rest of that woods, prepare it for development. And in exchange for that, the property owner's gonna build his own fence between that property and the hotel and across the back. He also owns, it's Rochester Place Apartments, that's behind the hotels, and he's gonna put about five hundred and fifty feet of fencing in exchange for us clearing this property for him while we're there. So that's, that's the other thing. So we do have all the MOUs on that. I'll meet with the engineer Monday, look me from today, and kind of getting our plans together on having to prepare for the CCMG grant in January, so we can have hopefully a completely, completely done by, maybe as early as June next year. So, it's really about all I've got right now.
Couple things real quick. They said Steve Williams was being a crossing guard out there this morning, so I wanna thank Stephen.
That's what Travis, that's what Travis said.
Stephen has took it upon himself, so I wanna thank you for...
Yeah, that was...
Safety.
That is volunteer. We, Dwayne and I talked about having one at fifteenth. Every time we put one at fifteenth, they want a twelfth, and then do that with any one of the patches. So we'd have to come up with three staff members, which is not easy to do.
Right.
So I'm hoping, I've kind of put, I've actually pushed in that pretty hard this last week, and we're gonna get some push-button, like I said, these crossing signs in pretty quick. And you really can't miss them. When they're active, you, I think it's gonna really help slow down traffic and draw attention to it, so.
Right. Another thing, we have not got, we have not got an inter-local agreement between the city and the county on nine-one-one dispatching?
You never found one for before?
No.
Okay. Well, we need to rewrite one for the additional.
Okay.
So whatever you guys, whenever you guys are ready to make that decision, you need to make that.
So Holly needs to be thinking about how she wants that.
Yeah, and the amount, because we'll need to get it in our budget right away.
Should we go ahead and set the amount? Can we go ahead and set the amount in, in a meeting, and then, and then they know what to write the inter-local agreement for?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so...
Josh.
No, he's not gonna be here.
We were, what, a hundred thousand dollar mark?
We're thinking around, around a hundred thousand dollars, yes.
Yeah.
I think that was a discussion we had early on. We were tossed down some numbers and kind of looking at how it's gonna offset some of our costs that we currently have that would, so we felt like it was gonna be kind of a wash between what we had been paying you, which I think was fifty for the nights and weekends. So, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. So I'll take it to the council or board of workers.
Well, we better vote on it then, haven't we? If that's what you guys wanna do, I mean, we better make it legal that way.
Does that include Spillman, too? The Spillman contract, getting them on board with Spillman?
I, I...
I'd just make sure that's written in there. If that includes that...
Maybe we'll take care of it.
I think you were gonna take care of Spillman when you, Trent, and that how it was...
With Spillman directly, but there's still associated costs with the county with them coming on Spillman server. And I know that's where Josh was, I mean, I would just, my guess is a hundred thousand probably includes Spillman. I would just make sure that that...
Are you in a big hurry? We'll see if we can get Josh over here in a little bit. See if we can't get him over here, and we'll, before we make a decision. Give us a few...
Okay, sounds good. I think I'll go.
No, we're good.
Okay. Michael, what effect are you on your support?
Literally, I just got the Duke Energy Banning Engineering Site Visit that we conducted a couple months ago. Questionnaires back, so I've gotta be filling those out. We've got three sites that they want to evaluate for further possible improvements at some point in time. The Lilly Endowment money, we had put in an arts project and on the light remediation side, we put in the Potts Building. For some reason, Stephen Rich Group failed to get the application in on time, so we're extending it over to the end of September. And I have to redo it, so at this point, I'll put Potts in and then a couple other projects that have come in to work with us. One in Fulton and one in Huana on top of it. The housing studies continue on going. We're gonna do a business roundtable in a couple weeks, get some businesses in, discuss what types of housing problems they're having very specifically. And then, this is separate, by the way, from all the other developers that we've talked about over the time. This is our project. And so we will be working specifically, designing specifically to the needs of the business community, the school system, the hospital, like that, what kind of homes that they're looking for at this point. And then the last part of it is, I told you that we were updating the hotel, the hotel study from four years ago, and the company is sending a young lady in tomorrow. I'm gonna bring her around for two hours through the community, show her different sites, different locations, just let her get to see what Rochester and Fulton County are like. And then she'll go back and do whatever it is that she does and give us some site selection. I expect to have the study done, apparently by the middle of September. And then we'll release that, too, so let's see.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
On the contract with the city, the MOU, did that include, we were talking around a hundred thousand dollar mark, correct, there at one time? Did that include Spillman? Where were we?
I'm not...
No, they put me in the spot.
It's been some time since we talked, talked about it, forgive me, Mayor. I know we kind of talked about the dispatch side of things, and then we also talked about the city police department with the interconnect with us. I know that we have some hard numbers, but I don't think we truly got to a full hard number set yet. Am I correct on that, Mayor, or am I incorrect? And Brian?
I think you're right. We had that number in our head. That's what we're trying to, I know we put you on the spot. I apologize.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Maybe if you could come up with, by the, our next meeting, just try to...
Yeah, and I think we're gonna probably find out more, because I know Matt is in the process of getting the link finalized on his end. We've got it connected. I know he's waiting. I think there's a piece of software that you need for an ANSA over there. But beyond that, we'll probably have a better idea of any other needs that they may have after this week, I would say.
Yeah, the way I was thinking, a hundred thousand was basically just for the dispatch.
I, I wanna say that's correct.
Spillman was whatever cost they had to burn, and whatever they wanna do with Spillman. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Right. And I know that, you know, hard number wise, the city police department's using their MDTs out in the squad cars, and we have hard numbers on that, because we had to provide them an absolute secure access license for each machine. But beyond that, though, I don't think we have any hard numbers as of yet, so.
All right. So when do you need your budget, Trent? When do you say?
Not in a month.
Okay.
So we got another meeting before we have to...
Yeah, maybe even two. I mean, we got a ballpark we can work from anyway, so I would say if you need another month, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Josh on that?
No.
Since you're here, Department headed the report?
Beyond what I have in the email, that's about the majority of it. Most of our focus is this week. We've got a couple website meetings. We may have to push the one back 'cause Kathy's not gonna be here tomorrow. But beyond that, that's pretty much what's going on, what you have in the girth of the email and the body of it. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Travis, Sheriff?
I don't have a whole lot at all. Kind of piggybacking off of what Josh said with the Spillman, we do have training scheduled this Wednesday for the city to train them up on the mobile Spillman. So, that's kind of why I brought that up, is I know that they're getting close. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's the way you guys, you know, whatever figured, figured Spillman, too, 'cause Josh does have hard numbers with that. So, our two K-9 Tahos were delivered Friday, so we've got those out, out on the road now. So, we decommissioned one that was on the end of its life. We're just gonna use it for an admin vehicle. And then we kept the other one set up to use as a pool vehicle for patrol. So, a hundred and thirty-eight inmates this morning. Fifty-one of those are ours. Fifty-four are Grant County, thirty are Howard County, and we have three federal inmates. Bethany Johnson, our newest hire from April, goes down August nineteenth for her physical assessment for the academy. If she gets in, then she'll start the academy following Monday for sixteen weeks. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
Thank you. Carrie?
I just got a few things, just updates. They are starting the sidewalk over in the north part of the courthouse right now. They're gonna try to do four, about thirty-fourths of it today, and then they'll finish up. And they'll be done by the end of the week, though. And I talked to John about the asphalt that we're gonna cut into, to having them come and hot-patch it right up against the new curb that's going in. Forte Seal just got here. That's where I just went. Excuse me. And they're digging down now to start that sealing process on the base of it. And then, if you've seen, I've got all the new lights coming. It's a slow process, but I've got them in your guys' office now. And I got a few more offices to do in here. And they've already started at the courthouse, too, so the lights are going in, and I think they look good. I hope you guys are liking them. I think it's gonna save us quite a bit of money. For about every ten lights they take out, we're gonna put in five back in, on the average, right now. This room stayed about the same, but I have been able to take some lights out of the area, so that we're not putting as many back in. So it is kind of saving us some money on that, too.
They're bright.
Yeah, and these are on the low LED right now. So, and I can adjust them again to, we want it brighter, which a lot of people don't, but...
You don't even know it.
I know. So, other than that, if you guys can answer a question. Oh, and the border, I wanted to bring up, the border is down to them coming and firing it up and checking it here in the next month to make sure the new border is ready to go. It's all wired, hooked up, and ready, so.
Do we have a price on what the curbing's gonna cost us?
Oh, extra on top of it? No, I don't. I, I keep giving the estimate. I'm thinking around five, eight thousand, somewhere in there.
Are you gonna have that in your budget, or...
Yes, yes.
You aren't gonna have that?
Yeah, I can cover it. And I, I just wanted to bring up, a lot of people have been asking me why the county's doing the city sidewalks. And I didn't really know how to respond to them, except that we're trying to take care of a problem that needed fixed.
They're not city sidewalks, they're county sidewalks.
Well, I...
It's on county, right?
No, it's actually, I don't... I actually looked up the property line, and it's not. It's actually city.
Lines to the wall inside, that is county. But it's, city says, like, we have to take care of the sidewalks. The homeowners have to take care of the sidewalks.
That's why I always thought sidewalks were ours.
We knew you were gonna bring that up.
I always thought the sidewalks were ours to take care of.
And I, you know, like I said, I wasn't, you know, just people, different people that asked me, what do you, why do you, why do you take care of all?
I think that's how it's supposed to be. They're, they're, I don't think they're technically ours, as far as the property, where the vouchers are, but I think they're ours to maintain, so.
We can blame them on Amy now, City.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's what we asked you about. Those were really...
And they're working on the probation, too, because it was actually busted in pretty bad. Actually, when you get over there and actually look at it, it was bad. So, I mean, I think that the probation office will look really good now that we've got sidewalks done, landscape done, it's more unison to each building, so.
Now he comes walking in.
So if you have any other questions, that's all I got.
People wonder why we're taking care of the city sidewalk.
It's not a city sidewalk.
I heard on the radio, you had to check this, it's money. So I gotta talk to my street guy. That's just like a Christmas gift to you all. They already took our Christmas trees down.
Four foot in the closet in there.
I know. I lived, I lived last year. It's exciting.
All right, thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you.
Chad, any maintenance up the jail?
Just the maintenance building. We are, they sent the application in for the state release and waiting to hear back from that, so. They still haven't given me a date on when they're gonna start, but I'm gonna say in the next couple months.
And that was who burned?
Yeah.
Those are Chad?
Yeah.
John, I have a question.
Morning.
Morning, John.
I've got several permits for you to start with.
Boy, old thirty-one's been a project, and this it has. Looks nice, but... I'm talking where they're boring all them lines and...
Oh, you're talking about RTC.
Well, whoever's doing it, yeah.
Yeah. A lot of stuff going on down there, a lot of project. Have you seen that? I didn't realize there was gonna be that in Facy. Are you, you're talking about up north?
Up north, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's Comcast one.
That's what I thought. I didn't think it, I think they got into RTC line yet or not, but...
RTC was born on the south end, too.
Oh, okay.
When we was paving, or, uh, when we was paving, so.
Well, it looks good. I know appearance a few times. The south is nice.
There's still some, oh, some things that need to be cleared up on that roof, but for the most part, it's about done. We have a little adjustment on some striping. Doesn't need reflectivity. There was some signage issues, yeah. Working off the checklist on it. First permit I have for you today is permit request twenty-four twenty-eight. Pierce Services on behalf of frontiers requests a permit to drop service at seven-two-nine South, three-fifty West Key One and four-hundred-three-fifty West, thirty-four feet and a depth of forty-eight inches.
See anything?
You can say, bro.
No issues today.
Okay.
Plans.
We have permit twenty-four twenty-eight. No questions on your motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second. All fair. Motion carries three out.
The next four I have are from Mark Thompson of NIPSCO. Start with twenty-four twenty-nine. He's requesting a permit to install a new gas line at thirty-one eighty-nine Main Street, down in Bud Lake. And all these are gonna be boars, so. Call, confirm that with me.
No issues with this one here where you're at?
No.
Okay. Permit twenty-four twenty-nine, again, motion to approve?
Second.
All favor.
Next one, twenty-four thirty. Again, NIPSCO's requesting a permit to install a new gas line at one-one-six-seven Ford West, South Park Road, Huana. Again, no issues.
Okay. Motion to accept.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three out.
And the next one is twenty-four thirty-one. NIPSCO's requesting a permit to install a new gas line at one-one-three-one-one West Lake Shore Drive, Huana.
I'm saying, it's a board to...
Yeah, all of these are boars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three out.
And the last one, twenty-four thirty-two. NIPSCO's requesting a permit to install a new gas line at five-seven-nine-nine North Lake Shore Drive. Nancy, you're in Bud Lake again.
Same, you're good with that?
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favor. Motion carries three out.
And it's all the permits today. Guys have been patching a whole... Guys have been patching holes, running the brush cutter. We're mainly working chip and seal right now, working on that. We're probably three-quarters of the way done this season, so. Weather's been kind of challenging this year, getting things done, a lot of rain and interruptions.
How many miles of chip and film this year you've got?
Was it around forty, John? Or did you ever take them out? About where we average here, usually. Frontal A, old thirty-one south, we talked about that. We've got a few things, are going to try to close that out. We'll have the final inspection around the end of the month, so, and close, close out that project. Community across these projects, ropes, I think the weather's held them up on getting over there, west side of the county, paving on those. But I know they're ready to go anytime, so they should be starting in the day on those. Of course, NDOT's still got fourteen closed from seventeen to one in Mac. They are letting traffic go through somewhat, local traffic, but they're going to start milling on that today. We're getting some of the millings, they're doing deep milling, and they'll come back when they get all that done and do the main line milling. We're getting a lot of millings from them on that contract, so. We've gotten a lot of millings this year altogether, because we've got a lot of them from old thirty-one too, so. And then they're even bringing in, they're doing loud parking lot today. We're getting those for free, so. Every little bit helps. I don't know the situation on State Route twenty-five. We still got a detour around the bridge at Mill Creek, or My Creek. Last I heard, it was going to open today, but I've heard rumors it might be another week. I don't know. Find out at the end of the day.
Say hello to John.
Yeah. On the lot drainage and stormwater, I know USI started the application for permit with I D A M. There have been some emails back and forth, what they're asking and so forth, but it's moved forward. The only other thing I have today is, we'll see a transfer request for eight thousand seventy-five dollars from calcium chloride to their supply, and that is to pay for the concrete blocks that we bought up there for the stockpiles.
They're working pretty good for you.
Yes, real good. We need a lot more of them, but maybe it's time moves forward, you know, we can get more later on. It made a difference.
That's good.
Bring the things up. You got any questions for me, or?
I don't.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Kathy, treasurer?
Other than, I'll be at conference Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so Jen and I will be out in the building the next three days. Other than that.
The room's good.
Everything's good.
Dawn.
Morning, guys. Kind of leaving off, I'll make up for what Travis didn't have today. I'll make up for it a little bit as far as what I've got to report. I believe it was in June, first of July, I reported to you about our Everbridge program that we were looking to cancel. They needed prior notice, and during all the confusion and so on and so forth. No worries though, I've got it in my budget. I'm going to go ahead and pick it up, and then that week said, I'm going to utilize it to the best I can. Seems to be something that I'll re-up next year. I know Travis and I have talked about that and figuring out what to use within our county on the Everbridge system, so. I will go ahead and use it for another year, get myself caught up on it, figure it out, and see if it's something I want to keep from them. So, some different things that involved EMA this month. I did attend the pastoral meeting with Amy and the mayor and council, and helping help program, start looking at that, so it's kind of a role that I've stepped into to help start filling there too, so. I have radio training with WTS on the GSI system that I'm wanting to utilize more so with our volunteers and trucks and so on and so forth, so getting my volunteers trained on that also. And we have an EMA meeting, and they are working on, so we know here at the auditor's office and HR, I've asked them to update their badges, to make sure everybody's got a badge to wear out in the public and on scene, so they know. So we have identification that, you know, who they are and what organization they're with. Also, we're at twenty-one members now. We've added a couple of members. We pulled in a couple from the actual fair, new members. The clerk's office and I attended last, Monday last week, sorry, guys. Anyways, we attended the voting cybersecurity, and it was very knowledgeable. Dawn and I went, and it was good, it was good. So, that's for our voting cybersecurity. There's a couple of things that we made notes of to get with Josh on, and she asked me a couple of questions, what EMA can do with the voting that's coming up in November, so. And then we had the Fulton days, that was just passed. July was a bit of a busy month, we have this to say for me, for EMA. We had three different weather responses, which is a total of thirty hours. We had two different accidents that we assisted with the sheriff's department, and actually one with Argus and Rochester Fire Department. That was one of the accidents that EMA needed to attend. Eleven was just a P, or fatality that we went on. But the one accident was up at thirty-one and ten, one-ten, and they had a spill that EMA, I needed to go out and take care of. And so total, and then three event, different events that we took care of, so we had a total of like eighty-eight hours for the month, just for the volunteers. So that was their totals for the month. Upcoming training, there was a helicopter training, if anybody's interested, at Albee, on the twenty-first in the evening. I believe that is at six o'clock, the helicopter training. And then LAPC, which is part of the county here, is doing a corporate lunching, luncheon at the fairgrounds on the twenty-first. And I believe that's right around noon, and that's a corporate luncheon, luncheon for LAPC. Upcoming events, and I just got with Trent, Mr. Dell, or Bear. I sent him out an email to make sure that I'm making, keeping everything covered, and we've got the Key One days, chili cook-off, the parade. Those are all the things that EMA will be involved in, unless you guys give me a heads up on something else to work with, so. I believe that's it for my report. Any questions, anything? Thanks, guys.
Thanks, John. Okay. Casey, assessors, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Amy, Amy?
Yes, yeah. So, Fulton County Hope, we did have the pastors meeting in partnership with Bear Dell, and had not as many as we had wanted. I don't know if it was the time, but who was there, were really engaged. Have a group of individuals who are willing to work on the short-term solution, as Trent and the others are working on the long-term. So, send email, I just sent you a text to confirm how your email correct. So we'll figure out what it looks like to have a warming station here in the cold months to get that taken care of. While they're working on the full solution, working with Doug. Bellar's still waiting for our transportation survey results, and so that was supposed to come in July. I haven't seen it yet, so I'm going to call the person on the way to work and double-check to see where they're at with that. That was, if you remember, supposed to be a review of the program for Transpo to see what we were doing and what the community needed, and if there was a gap. So, we had surveys that were submitted via a link, so I have not seen that yet. Hopefully that's helpful as we're looking at needing expanding hours, or whatever that would be. And then I'm going to get with Kathy here in a second, and just check, because I am meeting with the folks at the Beeman Home. Renee actually stepped away from the position, the director, to pursue other things, so they're in an interim situation. And so I have an interested individual in the position for the domestic violence counselor here, but we need to figure out the financing side of that, so I have a meeting with the new interim director on August eighth to kind of figure out what that looks like and what the next steps will be related to that, so that's Fulton County Hope stuff. I also wanted to just kind of, because we had talked about this, Brian, a little bit, for the city of Rochester, which the sidewalks are not the counties, that changes things. That would be one of those places there in green that they could go, but we wanted to make sure that it was a safety for us, safety first, so. The beautiful part about this is that we can do this, and then we can repeal it at any time. So I have talked to other towns and cities who have done this. In Warsaw, there was a lot of discussion. One of the council folks was concerned, so they put a lot of time and effort into reviewing and researching, even having the police do a report, we're in the process of that, and so, yeah, we've got lots of partners. Logan Sports, the one that has worked closely with us to get the ordinance together, so. We're grateful for the opportunity to provide a potential economic development opportunity for the restaurants, to help them and to help the events, but we also want to be very cautious in what we do with everything that we do, so. So that's kind of where we're at. So I don't know if we need to officially do anything about the sidewalks, or if I'm allowed to have the sidewalks in the map, but I plan on presenting everything to the team tomorrow, getting all the final details, and then moving everything forward.
Want us to give permission, that way it don't matter whose they are, we both, city goes along with the law.
Somebody's got to decide who wants sidewalk.
Just clear, but I was just told from my street department guy, the sidewalks were yours, it's like.
That's why I always thought too, I mean, truthfully, didn't they?
I honestly found this out too. I thought the parallel sidewalk all through town belonged to the city, but they don't. They belong to the individual property owner. So, basically the sidewalk belonged to you. You're going to charge your rent for them now for this, are you?
Okay. Yeah, you need to get permission to, for them to further investigate whatever it is they're going to investigate.
I mean, you got, have you seen much about it? I mean, I don't know.
Much about what?
What they're, what they're trying to do and the events.
This, this looks good.
Yeah, pretty much. I, I go to most of the city council meetings, so I've heard and talked about it for the last, what, two or three months. Amy, you guys have been putting this together, but I don't see a problem with that myself, but that's, if you want to, like, Amy, go ahead.
They have a few in Clement now, where they've, Brass Rail has them out there, and they bring alcohol out. Last year, they didn't. So with this new statute that came around, South Bend's opening up a lot of places that they have specific areas that they can have.
And it's not just a free-for-all, it's not just any.
No, they have.
I mean, that's not the intent.
Explain it, you've got a few seconds, explain it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, and that's not the, that's why we're putting so much time and effort into it. Trent, I have talked about this multiple times, and why I was asked to do it. We just want to make sure that we're being responsible in the research that we do, in the way that we understand and make sure that it fits for us. Honoring the business owners that have requested that we consider this and the organizations, but at the same time, make sure that we're doing what is correct and right for our community. And so, like I said, there's communities, I've checked from the size of four hundred to the size of Fort Wayne who have done this. From what I understand, nobody's had any issues, because they basically, it's the rules, everybody's got the rules, and they have what you can do and what you can't do. And then in that specific situation, we had a question that was asked, I believe it was a couple of meetings ago. If somebody were to get disorderly in this specific situation, would the police still be able to address that? And I said, yes, I mean, that's, you can't, this is not for individuals to go and have a free-for-all. This is just so that if there's an event, somebody could walk from unport to ruthless. They could, ruthless wouldn't have to have their fence to be able to do whatever they do. She could have things in the back of the patio, and they could walk around to the front. There will be signs on every door, the front and back, that say, you are now exiting into a dora. There's hard signs that say where the dora, the boundaries will be. Individuals can choose, if they are in the dora, to allow to have the adult beverages in or not. So we'll have signs so that it's very clear, decals that say, "Door friendly," or "Please no adult beverages," whatever. So there's a lot of, a lot of logistics to make sure that this is right, and like I said, if we don't like it and it doesn't work, then we can just, you know.
I, I think people could understand in front of a restaurant, to a restaurant, to a restaurant, I guess, I'm just trying to understand, and, I mean, I know what you're doing, but everybody needs to understand, you know, to have it around the courthouse and all the businesses down here where there's no restaurants, you know, what's the advantage of?
That's only for special event, special event, so that will be a whole separate ordinance, and I'm working with Becca McCraig at the Accelerate Indian Municipalities, because we have to get the details of that. That's a whole different ordinance, and that'll be related to anybody, so Trent and Beth and Andy, attorney Perkins, are working on a special event application. So if somebody were wanting to use this special event dora during, let's say, the chili cook-off, they would actually have to put an application into the city, and then that would have to go through a process, that would have to be approved for that specific event, for the use of that area, so.
So who carries the liability for, I mean, you're out here around the courthouse, and so are our sidewalks, so if something would happen. I mean, I mean, do they identify the county, because I don't think the county wants to pick up that.
And I totally get that. That is one of the details that we are working on with Becca, just to make sure we have that. So we haven't actually brought that to be able to finalize it. We're just working on getting the map and the ordinance together and all the details, but that was a question by Rochester Downtown Partnership, so I am meeting with Becca, or having a call with Becca coming up soon, just to make sure we have that part taken care of as well, and Rochester Downtown Partnership, because they are considering hosting the map. Like, we will have a QR code and it will have a map. They're asking their attorneys as well, so. This isn't easy by any stretch. We've got all the details we want to sign, still delivered before, so we can check into that too, with the, specifically with the sidewalks, what that would look like, obviously.
Liability, ought to be the same, because you've got to carry liability, whether they trip and fall, or what they do, I mean, liability.
Well, I think that it's a little messy, like you talked about with the sidewalks, because it's like county, city, county, city, you know, that I can understand when there's discomfort with that, so I don't know if you have anything, Holly, that, you know.
The, if, if I walk out there and fall down now, it's county, if, if there's a bump. But if they had a little too much alcohol beverage and falls, fall down, then you have a whole nother issue about who's responsible for that, so.
Well, and I do know that.
It could be a mess.
Yeah, I do know that one of the things that has to happen related to any event that happens, is they do, they are required to have special insurance.
The event is, yes.
Yes, the event is, so that is one thing that I want to fully understand. So the event is required to have insurance related to providing adult beverages. So I can check to see if that would be, if there were a situation, God forbid, would they be, would they be the first that would be identified through the event insurance? Is that how that works, the user?
Yes, yes, and, and the county, whosoever sidewalks they might be. First, we'd have to resolve that issue. You're not responsible if just somebody falls down, but you're responsible if there's a crack in the sidewalk, if there's a giant bump that nobody saw, but, you know, if you're just walking along and they trip on their own, then that's a whole nother liability issue that they would not win, because there's, they did it themselves, so.
And with the event insurance that they have, that they're required to get, then I'm assuming that that would be what would be taken. But we are double-checking all of those details, just to make sure that we know exactly, one hundred percent, talking to the city of Warsaw, because they've, you know, they're very detailed related to that, as far as Logan Sports as well, just to make sure that we have everything before. This is why it's taken since, what, February or March to be able to do this, because we've asked questions, and more questions, and researched more, researched more, had conversations, trying to figure out what makes the most sense, and what's sensible and relevant and needed, to the point that people are trying to rush, you know, these people are excited to have this for the events that are upcoming, but we just want to make sure that we don't feel that it needs to be rushed, we feel like it needs to be worked out for purposes of everyone being comfortable with what's moving forward, so.
So, you guys, we're, we're at the point, do you need permission, or do you need to? need to bring back?
I think it would be, I mean, if it were, like, tentative permission, just so I can get the map, because that's what I'd like to do in August. I'd like to present, Andy Attorney Perkins is out of town right now, but what we had discussed, because people, when they see things in black and white, it really helps them versus just talking about it. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the, the two ordinances with the maps, but I don't want to submit that to the city council not having had your permission to be able to do that, because that would be disrespectful. So I just don't want to put that out there without having some tentative, you know.
Do you have the permission for tentative to move forward?
Yeah.
Tentative, we got to see ordinance before we.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're not going to rush it through and hide it or, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we balance talking about it and showing it at the same time, but we obviously have a lot of partners in this and want to make sure that we're being responsible. Brian, also, if you'd like to talk to Josh Finch, I think holds a lot of the same, you know, ideals that you do at the city of Warsaw related to the Dora. And he did actually move forward and allow it to be passed. If you want me to connect you with him, and you can ask all those questions, because he's very detail oriented and would be able to answer your concerns and what they have experienced, I'm more than happy to connect you to you if that would be helpful. Yeah, because he's done a lot of research and he and I've talked a lot about it. And he shared his concerns and what they wish they would have done and all of those parts and pieces. So I could do that.
Well, I entertain a motion to give a tentative approval of the sidewalks for the north and the west side of the courthouse for the cities for the Dora.
For the Dora project. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other questions for anybody? All favor.
I appreciate that, and I'll make that connection.
Good, thanks.
We had a board meeting. We missed you, Dave. It was good to have you there, though, Rick. So we had a board meeting with DNR, people from Town Lake, people representing Myana Lake, it was JPR Engineering, and we discussed some concerns at our board meeting. I thought the meeting went pretty good. We came up with some solutions about sediment loads, nutrient loads and, sediment nutrient? Oh, that's it. Sediment nutrient loads going into Town Lake. And DNR suggested a layer, which is a lake and river enhancement program. We're still figuring out the logistics of the funds on that, but they said that would be really great to be able to do a diagnostic study of where those loads are coming from, because a lot of the property around Town Lake is in conservation reserved enhancement programs or done in cover crops and stuff like that. So we have a lot of, a lot of sediment coming into the lake and we don't know where that's coming through, whether it be farmers connected to county tiles and coming in that way, having a layer grant, will find point source solutions of where those sediments are coming from. So that's what we came up with that. And for Myana Lake, we just suggested that they lower the lake level, because there wasn't much room on that whatsoever as far as flooding and Myana Lake floods a lot. So that's, that's what we suggested. It is what we suggested. That's going to be a process for them to be able to do too. And not this Saturday, but next Saturday is our Successful Soil Solutions with Ray Archuleta and Barry Fisher. And everybody's invited to that, $25. We'll be meeting at the Fulton County Fairgrounds at the Everett Smith Building. And that's just going to be a great, it's just going to be a great day. Y'all just need to come, okay? So Ray and Barry are soil scientists and even if you're not like a big scale farmer, say you guys do gardening and you want to learn how to increase your organic matter, biodiversity and stuff in your soils and get better produce on your vegetables or flowers, come to this, you can learn something, I guarantee it. So I'm going to throw that out there. We did have one issue this past week with our pollinator habitat at Rochester City Park, and the mayor's been really quick on that. Somebody mowed over our pollinator habitat and took all of our flowers, so. But it is getting fixed. So that, that, Trent's been really great to work with and is quick on holding on that because they're, they're already in a grant, so yeah, that's a process that we're working on. I don't, I don't really have anything else other than that, other than I really hope you guys come to my bit. Does anybody have any questions for me? Nope, okay.
Okay, you guys had a chance to look over the travel request?
Yeah.
Questions? Any kind of motion to approve those?
Second.
All favor. Motion carries through. You guys had a chance to look over the claims transfers appropriations? Any questions concerning those?
Didn't see any.
We have a transfer request from the treasurer, $1,500 from legal fees and maintenance equipment to continuing education. We have transfer prosecutor's office for $3,809.61 from software to extra help. We have transfer requests from highway maintenance and repair for $8,075 from calcium chloride to other supply. We have the probation building for front fire systems of $2,486.51 to clean. County council, $111,585.48 for contract to equipment, just to transfer pay for the equipment purchase for Parkview ambulance services for our contract. We have health department. From the health department liaison of $17,466 to public outreach supplies and contractual services. Transfer from tourism, $2,800 for publications to advertising, just a transfer via advertising house and that gives us. Commissioners, office supply at $5,500 to building and other insurance, $5,500. Pay for the wood lawn, PCP contract, we sent the two certain transfers, so those paid on time, the rest of the money is able to be used for upcoming bills that are. And county commissioners, drug testing at $5,000 to building and other insurance, same wood lawn contract. Additional appropriation. Auditor's office, $18,857 for the financial and taxing annual payment. We have appropriation request from Keelhut Public Library, $76,513 for supplies and other services and charges and capital outlays. Exflation is under budget.
It comes out of their budget, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Insurance claim docket, $15,271.47 for dispersals of 6/6, 6/12. Insurance docket for the dispersals of 6/13 to 6/19, $3,885.39. Insurance claim docket dispersals of 6/20 to 6/26 of $8,273.79. Insurance claim docket for 6/27 to 7/3, $15,807.54. Insurance docket, wire fees of $53,71.63. Insurance claim docket for 7/4 to 7/10 of $32,478.69. Insurance claim docket, 7/11 to 7/17 of $38,630.85. Claims docket for utilities, $11,922.82. Claims docket for the Department of Treasury of $396.06. Claims docket for Regis Bank, $813,000.
Did you ask about this?
You have an explanation on that, $813,000 for the?
I know we talked about it.
We have a solid waste claim, $33,333.33. Wheel surtax, $56,838.32. Lit distributions, $743,615.8. Utilities, $15,361.83. We have miscellaneous claims for August 5th of $1,690,415.33. Credit cards, $12,851.51. Claims for the tourism commission, $30,462.26.
I just checked.
I'm not sure.
It's table.
Who's coming in for delivery?
Your health department.
Okay, we, we, we signed that, she comes up. Okay. Any old business here?
No, I don't believe so, but did we have minutes? You got minutes on there? Did we have a minute?
I don't have any minutes.
Okay, okay. No, I didn't have no, unpleasantness.
We, I got an email and I don't know for sure what we're going to do anything on it from Jerry and also from Christine Hawes concerning our EMA board, that apparently it was not specifically named. There's an ordinance, we have an IC code that says you're supposed to be on that board, but it doesn't have a specific name that we haven't ran it through a meeting. Do you know, Dawn, have you got the, have you got a list of the EMA board members that we have?
If you, if you give me a second.
Okay. We've been meeting, whether we need to run that before a meeting on Friday to run that through as official, just say exactly who's named on that.
Bad idea.
I know there was concerns with the 911 board too, as far as the security of the original ordinance, where it didn't say specifically how people got on the board or anything else, so.
But I think that the 911 is, they're wanting, Barry thinks we need to amend, do away with the, because that was in 1991.
Yeah, 89 was the original.
We need to, or the process, get something done with the 911 board, but we've got one that, for the EMA has been established for a meeting.
Yeah, and I, I actually spoke with Barry.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we've got our signals crossed here.
Christine Hawes said we didn't have it, have them specific, the position specifically meaning, named in our local county ordinances or IC or codes, and she couldn't find it.
So all we need to do is name them in a meeting to make them legal.
To make them legal.
If you got the names.
If you got the names, I know it.
Yeah, I'm pulling that from where we talked back and forth and I want to make sure I have them correct, because I know it's you and Jerry split your.
We're co-chairmans.
Yeah, and I believe Fish is, Fish is with us.
And his shots is on it.
Yes.
The fire chief, which would be now TJ.
TJ is on it.
Did we have another representative from the fireman, like Mike Timmy, or was, did Tom Butler just cover it?
Tom covered it.
Okay.
So.
Did we, did we have the mayor on that?
No.
Was he named?
Travis was probably on that one.
Travis was on there, wasn't he?
I think so. Travis.
I, I assume so, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, if you give them just a second so I can pull that and make sure that I'm not misquoting who all we have on there, and I'm just referring back to where Barry and I just.
We can circle back to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dave? No.
Have we taken care of the Wagner Farm out there? The spill was and all that?
Peterson.
Peterson, sorry.
Right, I think everything is, we're waiting on.
Yeah, we're moving forward. Insurance is reviewing everything right now.
Yeah.
And I spoke with Lou Smith this morning and he's going to get the soil samples, check them. He wants to wait till fall to put the top soil out. But yeah, we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, I haven't heard anything from him, so I figured everything was going okay.
Yeah, so far.
Okay.
We're moving forward.
Okay, thanks.
Can you see any business? Okay, Rick, any business, any old business from the public? Steve?
Might just mention and thank everyone, we have the honor guard, we did pretty good to benefit and give them life, then we sold the old bus, so we're over the top, got the new one all paid for.
Good deal.
Good deal.
Appreciate everybody that donated and bought tickets and everything else.
Thank you.
So we're, we're good.
Yeah, everything was good.
You find it all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You find it all? Okay.
Okay, so this is the same thing that I answered back to Barry. And we've got Dave Summers, Commissioner and Co-Chair. We have Jerry Good, Coroner, Co-Chair. JT DeBois, Fire, TJ, TJ, sorry. Doran Collins from Kewauna Fire Department, or Kewauna Township Representing Day. Andy Schatz was the law representation, that's where we were on that one with Travis. So Andy Schatz is law. Steve from council, Michael Ladd from Fedco, and then I'm there. Now, I can forward this to you guys, too, so you have it. Did you get that, Brian? I will, I'll go ahead and forward this to you guys, so you'll have it in print. But since it needed brought up in an actual meeting, there's, Casey is at work, brought up in the actual meeting for you. Okay. Do you want it to? So I'll, I'll send it to Christina Hawes.
So a sheriff's thought of it?
No, we had Andy Schatz.
Okay.
For the law.
Yeah, see, I've been to those meetings, so I'm not sure how I got it sorted.
So, and I think they've been there, too, though.
Yeah.
I don't.
We can put the sheriff on there, though.
It makes me, I, I mean, I think as an EMA board, I think you need to have...
Yeah, this is, I, I just adapt.
We're just talking through this.
But, but, yeah, we just, I would think Travis and the sheriff ought to be on there, because we'll encompass the county, and Andy would be in the city.
City, right. So, so let's have what you got and add Travis to that list.
Yeah. So we have Doran Collins, Michael Ladd, Travis, Andy, Steve, TJ, Jerry, and myself, and then Dawn as being the interim director.
Deputy Director, yeah. But I am going to go ahead and forward this to the three of you and to Christina Hawes.
Add Travis to it, don't forget to add Travis to it.
Add Travis?
No, no, add his name, too, though.
Okay.
Because if you're just forwarding that and they got his name, I want to make sure.
Okay, I will.
I will.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Is that a one-year term appointment?
You know, I...
Just this year?
I would say it should be, probably.
Yeah, like most of our boards.
And so then they're reappointed at the beginning of every year?
Because people's going to come on and go off.
Right, right. I just wanted to state that.
Thank you.
For the record.
Because I know it's been meeting, because we've been going to meetings, Travis, Steve, and I, all been there. It hasn't been, apparently, according to Christina Hawes, we haven't made it an official board.
And I, I will go back through and see if she's within all my files and double-check that there wasn't something, whenever, put into the, into play that maybe she's just missing, so. Because, believe me, there's files after files in there.
Okay, so we have, Dave read the list of people that will be on the EMA board, unless we'll supersede anything that's we've done prior to. Okay. So I entertain a motion to appoint that board, I guess, running through the end of the year.
Yeah.
And that board is called an advisory board, as I said.
EMA advisor.
EMA advisor.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Any questions for anybody? All right, all favor. That motion carries through. Okay. Everybody, old business, last?
All right, new business, Rick?
No.
Dave?
No.
Casey?
No.
New business? Okay, I've got public comment. Anybody want to say anything?
Okay.
Hearing none. I entertain a motion to recess.
Second.